Okay, here we go. We got a full house this morning. And you're not reminding me to where I'm at this morning.
I didn't know where I was.
We are here for our weekly Board of County Commissioners meeting. It is Wednesday, January 26, 2019. Many, many smiling faces in the room today for some special presentations. We're here at the Senator Hearing Room at 555 Court Street. And as always, we get to start our Wednesday mornings with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the world.
I don't know why, but it was special today to say that.
It was yesterday, too.
Maybe it was because of yesterday. Yeah. Still a little emotional about that, but it's another good day.
I have to change my notes. We care more about what you will do for Marion County today than yesterday.
Yeah.
A switch.
Yeah. It's, it's, look at everybody out there. It's so good. So many great people that work for this county and, and people who...
So why are they all quitting if it's that good?
They're so good, huh?
Do you have something you're going to hand me this morning?
No, just one after another, they're leaving us. That's not a joke.
You know, it is, it is a pretty serious place to work, but we have a lot of fun when we do it. And we have great people, and it's a, it's a great family to be here today. And we have one person, speaking of family, signed up for public comment. Tamara, you...
Am I the only one?
You're, you're the one that signed up. We had, Deb Patterson was signed up, but I think she crossed her name off. Who's Deb?
I'm with the Health and Advisory Board, like, presentation.
Okay, great. Welcome, Deb. Tamara, welcome.
Welcome, Erin. Thank you. And good morning, Commissioners. Tamara Getch, and I just wanted to take the opportunity, since it wasn't on the agenda today, just to let the community know about an event that is happening this Sunday at the Marion County Dog Shelter. At 9:00 through 11:00 a.m., we are hosting a licensing event for all dogs in Marion County. So we have arranged for a veterinarian to be on site to provide rabies vaccinations, and then you can step to the next booth and purchase your license for your dog for one to three years. The Marion County Shelter, if the audience has not been there before, the address is 3550 Omsville Highway. And that is, if you follow Lancaster all the way east, it will eventually run into Omsville Highway. And we are real close to the new Amazon building and right before the Sheriff's Office. So we are, this is our first hosted event at that site. We typically do this in the community, so we're trying something new on Sunday. And all late fees for this event will be waived. So this is a great opportunity for those who maybe have lapsed in their licensing of their dog and come in and get those waived for this one-day event. Suggestions?
No. She'll get her rabies shot and I'll be square again.
There you go.
I thought maybe he was going to drag me over to register me. That's what I thought.
Good idea.
So, thank you for the opportunity to comment.
You want to repeat the time again, Tamara?
Sure. 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Dog Shelter on this Sunday. The, is it the 30th? Yes, the 30th.
Okay.
Great.
All right. Thank you.
Marion County Fair up there.
She'll be back.
Huh?
She'll be back.
Yeah, I guess so. Okay, we have some presentations this morning, starting with Sheriff. And I believe the undersheriff has a presentation before the board does our presentation, so... Troy, we've got a microphone someplace. I think Brenda may have that for you.
Please stand by.
Well, this could be long. You may want to sit. There's a lot of stuff here.
It's my honor to be up here today to recognize and present Sheriff Jason Myers with the Sheriff's Office's Meritorious Service Award. The Meritorious Service Award is given rarely, honestly. It doesn't happen very often from our office, and it's for unwavering commitment and service to all through professional application of leadership principles. And through a truly storied 29, almost 30-year career, Sheriff Jason Myers has had a long history of dedication and commitment to this profession, our personnel, and our community by remaining focused on emergent issues and trends. Two of those emergent issues and trends have been the focus on behavioral health and transitional and reentry services. The Office's focus on behavioral health has been a concerted effort both internally and externally. Sheriff Myers has prioritized making the entire criminal justice system more efficient, fair, and equitable to those experiencing a behavioral health crisis. This is not a soft-on-crime stance, not at all. Rather, a consideration of individuals in determining case by case where the most appropriate place and resources should be used in support of a person who has had public safety contact. Over the last couple of years, he has brought together local experts in the field to streamline processes and divert people in crisis away from the jail and into community-based treatment. The success of these efforts is being replicated in other counties and states across the nation. Transitional and reentry services has also been a longstanding effort by our office under Sheriff Myers's leadership. The process has always been about restoring people to our community and protecting victims of crimes. He continues to advocate for pretrial reform and convened a group of stakeholders to craft a pretrial justice program which unifies the use of criminal risk assessment into the decision-making process related to arrest, detention, and pretrial monitoring. Marion County's programs for reentry work and supervision have been talked about on both the statewide and national level. This is a testament to Sheriff Jason Myers's commitment to keep our office relevant in the latest trends for public safety. Those are just two of the things that Jason has accomplished in his career, almost 10 years as our sheriff. And it goes on and on and on. The list, I could talk forever about all the things that he's done, but we could also talk about some things that, well, we probably shouldn't talk about. But, that's right, exactly. Furthermore, Sheriff Myers maintained a continued dedication to all facets of public safety, actively engaging and considering not just the four divisions of the Sheriff's Office, but also the District Attorney's Office, local law enforcement agencies in Marion County and other parts of the state, as well as community collaborations, nonprofits, county departments, local leaders, and elected officials and citizens. Finally, internally, Sheriff Myers always led with the mindset that our employees are our most valued resource. He pushed many projects on the employee safety agenda, including a focus on infrastructure with the new public safety building, a work environment that was conducive to officer safety, radios, work processes, employee engagement, leadership development, plans for cameras and door controls at the jail, the East Salem Service District, and a new RMS-GMS data system. A truly storied 29-year career. It's for these reasons that the Sheriff's Office is honoring Jason today with the Meritorious Service Award. Thank you very much for your leadership.
This, all this couldn't have happened without the great team that I have here in the room, led by undersheriff Clausen and just all of my commanders and all the, all of the professionals in the Sheriff's Office. They made all these projects happen, so it's, it's easy to be at the top like a conductor, but you got to have all those people playing the instruments and playing them well to make it happen. So, thank you. I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Well, Sheriff, don't go too far. You might want to, you do, you may want to sit over there to the side and we can, out of the range of, you know, things we can do. We've got a, the board has a presentation in, in honor of your 30 years, almost 30 years of service. And I think I'm going to start off with just sharing a little bit about your background. I think the undersheriff just shared a lot of, of those things, but Jason is a native Oregonian. He was born in Portland and, and raised in Salem and went to McKay High School, right here in Shemeka, the Community College, where you earned your law enforcement certificate there. His career began with Marion County in 1918.
1918, huh?
No, that's John. That's John. I'm sorry.
You're mistaken me for somebody else.
I'm much younger. I got, that was John, began in 18. 1989, at the age of 18. And he was hired at the Sheriff's Department to do summer park cadet work. And after serving in the summer, joined the Marion County Reserve Deputy Program, and in September of 1990, was hired as a full-time deputy sheriff. During your career, you served in so many places, I've got a long list of them here: patrol deputy, field training deputy, judicial security deputy, school resource officer, detective, patrol sergeant, narcotics detective sergeant in 2002, administrative lieutenant in 2006, operations division commander in October 2007, undersheriff in July of 2008, and in 2009 became the sheriff of Marion County. There's something that's not on here that I wrote down. You also became the chief lobbyist for everybody in the state of Oregon, because when I was in, it was I was in the State House, you were there all the time, working on progressive, really, really important things for the state of Oregon that has made a huge difference. And over the years, you developed policies and procedures, crafted strategic plans, negotiated union contracts, prepared and managed the office budget, and provided leadership, and I think that's the key thing, provided leadership to more than 350 personnel in four divisions of the office, enforcements, institution, operations, and community corrections. The sheriff holds an executive police certificate from the Department of Public Safety and Standards. And I think this is probably the most important thing. He lives on a small farm outside of Staton with his wife, Lorena, who is here with us today. And they have two sons, he and his family. And they, and he and his family enjoy outdoor activities such as camping, hunting, fishing, and quad riding. And they didn't write this one down, boating, because I know that's what you bought yourself for your retirement gift, a nice new surf wakeboard boat. So, Jason, it's been an honor to serve with you in all my years of public service, and you leave a legacy that will leave this office in great shape because of your leadership and the, and the, the policies, procedures, and just how you've left the office, so I'm honored.
It's my job to talk about all the work that you've done over the last 30 years, which is a little bit ridiculous, right? They gave me this piece of paper, which is like woefully inadequate to describe the hours that you've put in, the nights, the weekends. Just, you've committed your life to protecting this community, and we're all incredibly grateful for it. But I am going to read some of these, because it just kind of gives everybody here a flavor of just the breadth of the work that you've done in your career. You were the Sheriff of the Year in 2012 and 2013. You were the president of the Oregon State Sheriff's Association, 2013, 2015. You served on the Oregon State Hospital 370 Work Group, which Carrie and I were just there last week, and we learned how important that is to the safety of our community. And you've been on Oregon Behavioral Health Justice Reinvestment Steering Committee and pioneered some of the work that that committee did. Obviously, you've served on the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council, the seat of justice here in Marion County with Commissioner Cameron, the Honorable Commissioner Cameron. The Governor's Task Force on Public Safety, the Governor's Advisory Committee on Corrections Population Forecast, and on and on and on. And I, I think this just sort of speaks to not only your work here in the community, keeping us safe in a specific role, whether it's helping a victim of crime or making sure that our, our jail population is safe, that our deputies and the folks that are in our jail are safe, but also broadly for the whole state. It's very clear that your impact has gone much farther than just Marion County. So, thank you so much for your work, and thank you for your continued work going forward. I'm excited that you're not leaving us forever.
No, I have to talk first. Oh. So, it says right here, insert funny story about the sheriff, and they've given me that job, and I can't...
I have a feeling I know what this story is.
I can't be funny on demand, so no guarantees. So I debated, there are two things came to mind. I'm the one that convinced the sheriff that he should be wearing three stars, not two. I convinced him that he's not some podunk sheriff, and this is no podunk county. So, I won that argument. I'm kind of proud of it every time I looked at him. But the story I want to tell takes a little bit of time, but we laugh at it still. For a number of years, I was taking, I called it my legal day fishing, and I'd have judges and sheriff, undersheriff with me quite often. This particular time, Jason, Troy, and I think Judge Dale Penn was with us, and Walt Begla, District Attorney. So they were just arriving at my house on the solets, and I told them, you know, I just saw some fish rolling by the dock. What I would normally be doing now is throwing a pole off the dock and see what happens. If somebody'd watch it, I'll do that. Jason, oh, I'll do that, I'll do that. So I threw it out, and we went in the house, there's big picture windows, and we started talking. Troy went out to the deck to make a call. Phone's kind of iffy there. And all of a sudden, Troy comes running in, he says, "Your pole, your pole." And we looked out, and we both just stood there watching it for quite a while. They go, "Oh, we got to go." So, down the deck, across the yard, down the ramp, to the pole, and Jason starts fighting the fish. And I looked over, and there's not much line left on this pole. I said, "Hey, we got to go. Let's jump in the boat that had me tied there. Untied it, got it going. We're about halfway down." I said, "You need to make some line back on this pole now." And he kind of looked at me like, oh, I'm trying. I said, "Really, you're a big husky guy. You can do, you can do better than this." And he gave me this look like, you know, if I wasn't busy, I'd be boxing your ears. Then I got thinking, you really probably don't want to give your sheriff a lot of... Anyway, he, he said, "I can't do anything. Something's wrong with your pole." And then, at that time, way down the river, the seal lifts up out of the water with the fish in its mouth. And then it went dink, and that was gone, and I had to apologize. It was disaster, but if you could, if you could have seen the whole thing, it had made a good film. And now you get your plaque. I wish you had your three stars on today, though, but we'll deal with it. Down there?
Yeah.
Jason, I'll read this, because I like it.
There's a reader?
No, this is pretty big, at the right distance. "In sincere gratitude for your dynamic leadership, professionalism, and enduring compassion for serving and protecting the residents of Marion County for the past 30 years," from the Board of Commissioners.
I want to take a quick picture. Quit talking, Sam.
All right. Do one more? All right. Thanks.
Thank you. It's been a privilege and an honor to work with the three of you as Commissioners. Our work together has, I know, made this county a better, a better place. And working with John and Jan in the board's office, and I look out across this room, and I know I'll miss somebody, but just all of the, the county offices, the work that we've done together, it's, it's, it's been amazing. And I know that our county is safer, the Sheriff's Office and the county as a whole is in a better place. I, I would be remiss if I didn't thank my wife and my family. They've been my support, they've been my rock. They've been there on the good days, they've been there on the tough days. And I couldn't have done this job without Lorena and my boys and my parents and everybody that have circled around me. And then my executive team, my executive leadership team, undersheriff Clausen, Sarah Zavala, my commanders, chief civil deputy, all the leaders in our organization. You guys are amazing. You're going to do great things. I'm very, very excited about where the future of the office is going. So, I hope that the, the community recognizes that the Sheriff's Office is in a great place because of all this collaboration and the work and the professionals that we have in that office, and they're going to continue to do great things. So, thank you very much. And just finally, the citizens, just thank you for your support in keeping me in this office. I count it as a privilege every single day. So, thank you very much.
Sure.
Well, this is fun, but just a special, Jason always kept us so informed, and I appreciate it so much, that it doesn't come up this, when there was something bad going on or something we need to know about. I hate to see his number come up on the phone, but he took good care of the county and us. That's all I want to say.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
John.
You know, I've been a public manager for a very long time, probably too long. And I've seen managers come and go all over state government and county government, and there's never been one that has been like Jason, who, he has a vision, he manages across the county, not just the Sheriff's Office. And Jason really helped me implement what I call an enterprise approach to management of county government. Jason and his folks work with all the county departments. There are no silos where Jason comes. And I appreciate it, and Jason, I'll miss you, boy. Thanks.
Well, good. And I'm looking at the picture up there, and I thought maybe that was Jason and his wife up on the horses. But we've got to move on to our next presentation with the Marion County Fair.
Got some cows there.
Mmm. And then I got my cow bill.
Oh, that is pretty good. Even black and white.
Hello, Commissioners. Again, Tamara Getch with the Marion County Community Services Department. I'm joined today by great partners in our work with the Marion County Fair.
Mike Adams, Marion County Fair Board. Thanks for letting us be here and speak.
Jill Ingles, I'm the event coordinator for the Marion County Fair.
Ken Outfley, Marion County Fair Board.
And I, I do, it'd be remiss for me not to just take this opportunity to thank the Sheriff's Office and what they do for the county fair. If it wasn't for the support of the Sheriff's Office over the years in partnering with the Fair Board, helping us set up, helping us tear down, we would not be able to accomplish and set up and provide the community with the type of fair that we have. So, I just wanted to take this opportunity to recognize that, and they're a crucial part and an example of the enterprise approach that John talked about. So, well, we're just two weeks away from the Marion County Fair, and we wanted just to take this opportunity to talk about what's happening at the fair, let the community know about what we have going on. Not only are we joined by great Fair Board and event coordinators, but we're joined by Patty and Stu, and by graces of the assessor's office, they let us borrow them for the day. And this is just an example of what you might see at the fair, but they'll be 3D rather than just these flat cut-out boards. We thought it might be a little bit easier to keep things clean this way. So, the Marion County Fair is July 11th through the 14th, and we have a lot of great things that are happening this year at the fair. We have some things that are quite typical year to year, and we will make sure that each event is well-organized and serving the community. One of them, the thing just keeps clicking. I'm not exa, I'm not touching anything, I promise. We just want the community to know that we are ready and excited about them joining us at the fair. We have events that are happening. We have rodeo and art and activities that are happening each day. I'm going to kick it off to Ken to talk about our Honor Day on the Thursday, July 11th.
Good morning. So, I was asked to brief Honor Day, so I'm going to cruise through the stuff that I don't know a lot about, and then I want to finish off with what I consider the meat and potatoes of Honor Day. So you can see on that list there, we have a lot of activities going on, the stage musical acts, the wood carvers, professional photos, 4H bake sale, which I try to stay away from those, the quilting and spinning bingo, cheesecake contest, another one that I avoid, the Real Heroes Display, which is phenomenal, if you've seen that before, and then, of course, the fitness demo, which is where I should spend more time. So, what I do want to talk about, though, first of all, on Heroes Day for Honor Day, the prices, we're running $9 for general admission. All military and veterans will be free. Seniors 62 and older will be free. Children 6 to 11 are going to be $5, and 5 and under are free. And as always, parking is free for the fair. So, let's talk about Honor Day. So, I'm a new member to the Fair Board. When they brought me in, we were talking about this Honor Day. This year, they, they were like, just take it and come up with something. So, instead of making Honor Day more of a Memorial Day, we wanted to turn Honor Day more into a celebration. And then we wanted to mix that in with kicking off, because everybody likes to kick off an event with a party, right? So, Honor Day is going to be a veteran's celebration and an opening ceremony. So, I went a little hog wild, aim big, miss big, so hopefully this all works out this year. So, I'm going to run through some of these things for you. Live music, which we have the Kenny Sears Band, which is going to be playing. They are practicing some patriotic music, because they're more of the country, country rock, but we've tasked them with some other stuff. The colors presentation, my friends at the Oregon Army National Guard are going to be presenting colors this year. So the National Anthem, we had a young lady who's not going to be able to perform, so I've come up with the idea that this year, everybody, including you gentlemen, are going to sing the National Anthem. And we're going to sing it loud enough so that everybody hears us across the country. So I figured that'd be a great way to get us all started, and the band is practicing right now to be our, our backup. Guest speaker this year is Kelly Fitzpatrick, who's the new director of the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs. She's a phenomenal lady and a phenomenal speaker. She's already doing great things at the ODVA. The awards presentation, which you know about, that will be presented by the ESGR, which is the Employee Support of Garden Reserve. And then, of course, special family recognition, all of my friends at the Service Member Family Support for the Oregon National Guard, they're going to be down there helping out. They take care of all of the families of deployed soldiers while the soldiers are deployed, and then when they get back from it. So, be a great team there. They're going to be setting up tables and meeting everybody. And then, closing, following the live music, I think that kind of sums it all up, but it's all about having a good time. We want to get the fair kicked off and started right and put everybody in a great mood, because we wanted to come back day after day for the fair. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ken.
I don't think I need to, but, you know.
Just pull that one up close.
I can probably, I can probably just define here. So I get to talk about Awesome Day, and that's Friday. And our target with Friday is really about trying to make sure we're talking to teens, and we know better than to talk to teens, because they don't want to be called teens, so we just call it Awesome Day. Through partnerships with SKEF, Salem Kaiser Education Foundation, we offer admission for any youth that's wearing an Awesome 3000 shirt, free. So we see a lot of kids coming in with their SKEF shirts on, getting into the fair free. We do have photo booth fun, and we do some fun with social media contests and things on that day, just to kind of get the engagement going. And then we really focus on the STEAM activities on the stage. Again, our partnership with SKEF, they bring in a team... Again, our partnership with SKEF, they bring in a team and we're going to be doing these things right at the fair. Kids can come in and make some magnetic slime, they can make a kaleidoscope, they're going to build a robotic hand model. And then, at the end of the day, we actually take them just outside the building and they learn about trajectory with a water balloon launch. So, we really tie in the STEAM activities with that Awesome Day and have a lot of fun on Friday. Of course, that night, we have Restless Heart on stage with, which is more of a pop country group from 90s, most of us remember. So, it's going to be an awesome, awesome Friday.
Who's the target for the water balloon launch?
All I've been told is it's about trajectory. I'm not sure they want to disclose who's the target.
Kevin, don't you usually volunteer for those type of things?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have some other, yeah.
And then Saturday, we're really focusing on agriculture. If it wasn't for our agricultural community, many of our families would be without all the wonderful produce, the fresh and lean produce, or the products that come out off of our farms. And this is a way to really celebrate all of those young people who are working on projects in their own homes through the 4H or FFA organization. They're going to be there all four days, but this is really the one day that we are truly highlighting all of the work that they've done and bringing forward some great things. We're also going to be having our Rough Stock Rodeo, and that is a free event. So, many people don't realize that with the admission into the fair, you also get to get into the rodeo free of charge. So, pack up your kids, pack up your neighbors, and come on down to the fair for Saturday and join us. We also have Jared Neiman, and he's a country western musician, and he's going to be sharing all of his wonderful hits over the years as well. He is quite well-known in the veteran community for how he honors their, their efforts and fights for our freedom. So, he has a large following and we're excited to have him there with us. One of the big, one of my favorite places to walk around the fair is during the Home Depot Kid Workshops. You see the, the kids with their parents kneeling down or them by themselves and just hammering away, trying to make that whatever project that has been determined for that year, the best possible it can be. And so, it's really a lot of fun to watch that. The other part that's really important, and we really need community support, is through the auction for the 4H animals. So, this is an opportunity, if you are looking for a way to help youth succeed and to honor them for all the hard work that they've done over the years, you can go to the auction, you can bid on the animals that are up for auction. And if you're lucky enough, you get to walk away with owning that and be, it can go right to the...
Freezer.
Yeah, right to the freezer. I was going to say the butcher, so.
Right to the smoker.
Smoker, whatever your, your preference is. So, that's a great way for you to not only enjoy the fair, but also support our, our young kids and our community.
Okay, now, I guess it's my turn. I've been told to talk about Family Day, that's Sunday, July 14th. To start off, the, the pricing on that is adults are $9, seniors $5. The main thing I want to get to is youth under 12 is free. So, you can bring your entire family. Free parking, so you get in, you get into the fair at a reduced cost. And there's a lot of fun stuff to do on Sunday, starting with, and I guess they put me in charge of this, because, because I'm a car guy.
Oh, yes.
I got the car shirt on. And then, so we're, we're expecting a large crowd of car guys, because my friend Jim Billings and Rich Bailey are bringing in their, all their, their clubs or whatever they do. And then, the other thing that put me in charge of, I don't know why, is the barbecue grill off competition. And we're going to be doing two proteins this year, we're going to do chicken and ribs. Unfortunately, you can't go around and taste each one, but it's really fun to go around and watch each team doing their stuff. And I keep getting emails and calls from people on, "Do you supply me with the barbecue? Do you supply me with..." You know, "No, you, you bring your barbecue, I'll give you the meat, you do whatever you have to do." So, it's going to be really fun to see, you know, everybody's different recipes. And that goes, both of those are going the entire day. The cook-off isn't over until about 5 o'clock. And so, you, you know, you come out and watch, and I still need a couple of judges if there's any Commissioners that want to sit in and judge, but it takes up a few hours of your day.
Sam hates barbecue.
Okay. And then, and then, all, all the things that are happening for kids that day, we have the puppet show, Lego Live Build, the Pretty Baby Contest, this one's been going on for, I don't know how many years, but it's still going on. Home Depot, again, my friend Byron puts on the Home Depot Kids Workshop and, and he'll do whatever projects all day long. And usually, that's really a, a big hit with the kids. He'll have 200 kids sitting at buckets, making these projects, teaching them how to use hammers and nails and glue and all that stuff. And then, superheroes are going to be walking around, Star Wars characters, Disney Princess, Iron Man, Spider-Man. So, there's going to be, there's going to be just tons of stuff for the families to see and do for the final day of the fair. Oh, yeah, and then the 4H small, small animal contest. So, you dress up your little guinea pig in whatever clothes that your guinea pig wears, and I don't know what that is, and they're judged on it and somebody wins a prize. So, that's, that's it for, for Sunday, and I'll let Tamara finish off.
I had just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight. One was on Sunday, something new for us is the Yucan Yucat. We've got some local magician, magicians, musicians coming together. They're bringing a bunch of ukuleles and they're going to teach kids how to play, and they'll get stage time if they want it. They're also doing a petting zoo for instruments. They're going to bring all these instruments out and let the kids try to play them and, and teach them. And it's just going to be kind of a free-for-all. So, they're calling that Yucan Yucat. And we also have youth performers from Marion County on the stage all day. So, we've got lots of different things with cute little dancing kids and singers and things. So, that's on Sunday. The other thing I wanted to just talk about was how impressed we are, the 4H and FFA entries this year. Last year, we set a record for the number of youth participating and the number of entries, and they've surpassed that again this year. And just as a point of interest, there will be more swine at the Marion County Fair than at the State Fair. So, we're pretty impressed with Marion County's turnout.
You could get a little more specific if you would. You're killing. I was going to bring it up, but just say there's this family, Brentano, I'll say Mullin, Schindler.
There might be a couple of those brands out there.
They could be.
So, when we're talking market auction and we're talking the appreciation of the Sheriff's Office, the Sheriff's Office brings a work crew out to help us set all those pins, and it's a huge, huge setup. So, because of the great turnout from Marion County, it's pretty impressive.
And we couldn't have do, uh, do what we do for the fair, for the community, without our fabulous sponsors. Jill and her team have also the task with bringing in additional resources to support the production of this fair. And we've just seen the last two years, huge community support for what we do and for the purpose of the fair. And we just truly appreciate all of their continued support and participation. And then, we have, we're flanked, Jill and I are flanked by two of our seven Fair Board members. And then, we also have key volunteers. Fair Board members are limited to seven by state statute. So, seven individuals are challenged with working together to put on this fair every year. And without their commitment of meeting every single month, of truly 12 months a year, we're actually meeting tonight. And they just both take on projects, they make sure that we're doing what's best for the community and for the kids that are involved in the fair. They do a gallant effort and we really appreciate all that they do. I also just wanted to, in closing, say that if you are interested in, in any competition, you can go to marioncountyfair.net and you can click on the contest link, see what kinds of things might have your interest. Is it quilts? Is it food? Is it flowers? Is it Legos coloring? We have free coloring contests that you can pick up, coloring sheets. Submit those on Wednesday or Tuesday.
It's on Tuesday.
Tuesday. And submit those and you can get a free ticket to come back to the fair. So, we're really trying to get community engagement and there's all kinds of ways for people to be connected. We know that people have choices of what they do with their time, and we hope that you'll look for the, what we have going on and take the opportunity to join both your rural and urban community members in enjoying, very centric in the community as well as bringing our ag culture in and just celebrating our community and all of its great diversity. So, with that, any questions? Sam's giving me the eye.
I have a question. Are succulents legal as flowers?
In my family.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that we qualified that ahead of time.
We have the power to change that.
Yeah. I, I was just looking at AccuWeather 15-day forecast, as far as it goes out, is to Wednesday 7:10, it's supposed to be 90 degrees and sunshine.
We hope that it doesn't get much hotter than that.
Quite that hot.
Yes. But this year, I do want to say that we have arranged for shade beyond what we had in the past. So, the Ingles have taken a challenge from the county to look at options for us, what, so that our fair can be produced both rain and blaring heat. And they've, they've stepped up to that challenge.
A lot can change between now and then, so.
Great. I was hoping you'd mention that, because that, it was hot last year and we tried to address it and make it more comfortable and more enjoyable experience for people to come. So, this is a good chance to tell them it covered it.
Yes.
Do I get to ask a couple of things? You knew I couldn't stand it very long.
You have the power to change. Right, you need two of us to vote to get rid of the succulents, though, right?
Is this, why don't I just do it? What I did want to, you think I dwell on things, don't you, Tammy?
Perhaps.
Maybe, maybe jam, too.
I think he's just more sore, sore loser. Do you know about that?
I'm not used to losing, if that's what you're... I had some serious points once. Oh, you left off the most important event of the whole fair, that the board will be holding the opening meeting there. I'm sure everybody looks forward to that. We've had visits, I, we may get cows, we've had turkeys. I haven't quite got over it.
Legislative dinner.
Legislative dinner is fun.
Dog bite suit.
Dog bite suit and a special blueberry...
Cheesecake.
Cheesecake competition that you haven't really... This'd be a good time to advertise that, as a matter of fact.
So, on, we will be having a contest of, like I said before, click on the contest, find blueberry cheesecake. If that's where you want to participate, we'd love to have entries. John would love to have some pies to taste.
I was going to say that, since I'm supposed to be tasting pies to find the best one, there better be some.
That's right.
There are literally hundreds and hundreds of contests, from poetry to art...
Photography.
To baking hobbies. The Legos has been really popular, getting a lot of kids interested in that. So, not just the traditional things, but we like to mix it up a little bit. So, we want to see some of those new things, and there's, there's just a million things, it feels like, that you can enter. And if it's not a category, our superintendents will probably consider adding it.
Homemade ice cream won't work in 90-degree weather. I don't know how it's...
We can try.
Mike, you got a freezer out there?
I got a big walk-in, no freezer.
We can make it happen.
Bottom line, I enjoy it every year, and I think people that come do too. And I do want to thank you all for your work. I've sat in on some of the meetings, the planning goes all year long, and as we get close, it all comes together and gets better every year.
Yeah. And our volunteers are really, really important. Thank you very much.
And I would just, since you mentioned volunteers, we are still looking for more volunteers, and they can contact our office at 503-588-7975. Or they can go onto our website and indicate their interest in volunteering. We need people at info booths, giving people direction, helping move things from one place or another, giving information out to fairgoers, et cetera. So, we have lots of opportunity to both enjoy and participate. Thank you for your time.
You forgot to mention, this is a great place for grandchildren.
Exactly.
Mine always look forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And what are these, what are their names?
Patty and Stu.
Hmm.
Hmm.
When he grows up, he'll make good stew. Make it now.
Little veal.
Little veal. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Our next presentation this morning is from the Marion County Health and Human Services Advisory Board, 2019 Year-In Summary. We have, I believe, three of it, is there's three? Well, they got, we've got more than three today. The whole advisory board's here almost.
There's a whole bunch of us here.
Right. Good to see you, Patrick. I saw Mike there, Mike's here. Deb, Carrie, Carrie, are you going to kick us off here? Okay, good. We'll give a little change out. Mr. Adams, by the way, I, I had lunch at one of your establishments the other day and it was so good. At Bovine? Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Oh. I have to stay away, stay away from your homemade french fries.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Carrie Muller, and I'm the Administrator for Marion County Health and Human Services. We're here today at our commitment to bring a report back to the Board of Commissioners on the work of the Health Advisory Board. So, by way of introduction, the Marion County Health Advisory Board is a statutorily required board. The Health Advisory Board advises the Board of Commissioners and the Health and Human Services Administrator, that's me, regarding matters of importance to the health of our community. There are two formal subcommittees of Health Advisory Board, our Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Council, as well as our local public, Local Alcohol and Drug Planning Committee. The, um, the Health Advisory Board is a Citizens Volunteer Board, represents the interests of the community as a very engaged board. I am super proud of the work and the development of this board over the last few years. I'm honored to work alongside this well-informed, broad base of key Health and Human Services stakeholders who reflect very important perspectives of our community. They represent family and individuals in service, public safety, education, social services, our healthcare community partners, and many other sectors of our community. We make a concerted effort every meeting to bring the community perspective to the table and have it inform the work of the Health and Human Services Department. I applaud their commitment to the vision and mission of our department. Health Advisory Board has made it a priority to bring this annual report to, of our work to you, the Board of Commissioners. Patrick?
Thanks, Carrie. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Patrick Vance. It's my honor to serve as the current Chair of your Health Advisory Board. Carrie has really highlighted the structure and the role of the board, and I wanted to underscore the fact that you already know that. You've read the credentials of all of our board members. You know that we represent professions and involvements in hospitals and education, the things that Carrie mentioned. We bring expertise in everything from medicine to education to social services to any, any of the facets you could imagine. We also want to focus on representation of the population, of the people in Marion County, people up the canyon, people up in the north end of the county, even Staton and Turner. So, part of what we're doing today, in keeping with that, is to echo something, I think it's the counterpart to what you honored Sheriff Myers for, and that is outreach and expanding the role of the department into the issues that really do impact the social structure and the, and the life of the people in Marion County and enhance the life of Marion County. Because we come in the opposite direction. Because we come in the opposite direction. We bring volunteers from Marion County into an advisory board, uh, and as Carrie said, from blocks of life and with various kinds of expertise. So our real goal today is to, to introduce, reintroduce some of those folks to you and talk just a few minutes about, uh, what each of them are doing and what they bring into our board, uh, in the hopes that it underscores the value of the Health Advisory Board to your work. Trevor, you wanna start? Okay.
Hi, I'm Trevor Nupkes, I'm a Lieutenant with the Salem Police Department and I'm on the Health Advisory Board. To go along with that, we, as the board, bring a perspective, uh, to the board and to the important job that Health and Human Services does for everybody in the community. Uh, specifically in my position, I work very closely with the, uh, mental health services that are out there, especially because, uh, our officers with the Salem Police Department and our teams with Marion County Sheriff's Office, uh, are out there on the streets, meeting people where they're at and trying to work together to get them into the services that can improve their life and improve, uh, their, uh, quality of living. So, um, that's just kind of one example of the on-the-street contacts with people that are utilizing the services that are provided by Health and Human Services. And being able to come back and bring that information, bring that knowledge to the board, to Carrie and to see real changes go forth and to see, um, new teams be formed, continuation of funding for current teams that are there. Additionally, we've been asked to meet with OHA, which does provide, uh, quite a bit of funding, uh, at least to teams that trickle down to me and my organization and my teammates with Marion County Sheriff's Office. And, um, to see that what's going on with the board and what's going on, um, with Health and Human Services, Marion County Health and Human Services is cutting edge for the state. Every time we've met with them during a grant audit, they're very impressed. They actually ask, "How do you do this? How do you do what you guys do?" And it starts with the leadership, um, at the county with Health and Human Services and then with the ability of the board to come and provide that, uh, vital input. So, um, it's a vital role that is played by all the people. It's a very, um, good crosscut of people in Marion County and, um, from residents to people that work in Marion County. And I think that, uh, we're hoping to continue and bring even more and, um, get an even wider selection of people to come forward.
Good morning Commissioners and, uh, thank you so much for the opportunity to be with you today. Uh, my name's Deb Patterson and I'm on the Health Advisory Board as a representative of the Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Committee, um, which as Carrie mentioned, along with the Local Alcohol and Drug Planning Committee, is one of the two subcommittees. I'm happy to report that as of today, most of the seats on the IDDAC are filled. Uh, the committee has a wide represent, variety of representation, as does the Health Advisory Board. Our representation is from parents of children and young adults with ADD, um, from providers of services, advocacy groups, teachers, and former case managers. We would still very much benefit from the expertise of someone in vocational rehab, that's been a hard spot to fill, and, uh, as well as a self-advocate, again, a hard spot to fill. I am happy to report that the IDDAC has recently completed a strategic plan which seeks to address several needs. First, the need for increased community awareness of what services are available. Second, increased and more culturally responsive community and partner engagement, particularly in underserved areas and communities within the county. And third, in increasing the numbers of providers, including childcare and adult foster homes, twenty-four hour residential care, employment providers, personal support workers, and transportation, um, providers throughout the country. DD Services is also going to continue to develop their DD Quality Council to review, analyze, and identify continuous quality improvement opportunities and ensure compliance with state and federal regulations. And if, if you've not yet seen our strategic plan, I, I'll be sure that you each receive a copy.
My name is Sean Moriarty and I'm also one of the members on the Health Advisory Board. And, um, I would like to highlight that my organization that I work with, Youth Era, um, working with the Health Advisory Board isn't just one way. I'm not showing up to participate and give input from the young adults' perspective, but I'm also able to take the information that I have from the Health Advisory Board back down to the street level and have them work with that. And an example of that would be, uh, we had the Health Department come in and do a presentation about the STD raids in the area and kind of if they're fluctuating. And out of that conversation, we were able to work with the Health Department to set up a mobile STD testing van at some youth locations, that way they'd be able to have safe testing and pretty much try to de-stigmatize what it is so that they'd be able to have a safe time while doing it. The opportunity that the Health Advisory Board creates is that conversation where we can have those opportunities to bring in other health departments or be able to give input on that and then actually implement that in the community as well too. Uh, and so it's been an honor to be able to serve with everyone and have that two-way conversation, not just with the board, but other members on the board and other organizations that are represented there as well too. Um, and so it's been awesome being able to work that way for it and definitely suddenly seen the value from the top end of the board all the way down to the street level as well too for that.
Thanks Sean.
Michael Nann, uh, mental health advocate, Executive Director of Salem for all in Salem.
Michael, can you eat that microphone there?
Sure.
There we go.
Sure.
Thanks.
We found that engaging the community seems like a great goal for the Health Advisory Board in the last year or two. We've built members on the board and we find that, um, representing our constituencies, the community, we can give a perspective of what is working in the community at that time and what, uh, means things to people who need, that we can make a difference with. So we've been using social media. We've found that that's a meaningful way of engaging part of the community. We've had quite a lot of success with that. The Facebook page has two thousand two hundred and seventy-four likes. The Winter Wellness Campaign, which was a winter health-enhancing event, I had one thousand four hundred and seventy-one likes, comments, and shares. The board with participated in an STD Facebook Live, reached, um, that reached six thousand eighty people and had seven hundred and fifty-nine likes. The Mental Health Facebook Live, which was a panel discussion of the hope the Health Department brings to people with mental health issues, uh, try to, the attempt to eliminate stigmas, the, um, um, possibilities for people with mental health issues currently, was very successful and it was top-performing video so far, which is something that we're very pleased, I'm very pleased with as the mental health advocate because I think that, as Trevor said, you know, engaging the community with all kinds of advocacy issue, things for mental, people with mental health issues is very important. Also throughout the year, we came, there was a wonderful movie called Resilience, which is an important thing about trauma-informed care. The Health Department was responsible about engaging community partners to get that movie displaying at different venues throughout the community. And it reached, uh, many people, so, um, we have other different types of opportunities too that we use throughout the meetings, such as a new one this year called Talk Around Town, where we come in with ideas that we've heard mentioned throughout the month, um, in the community with, with our contacts. And we, uh, bring that to the board as a starting point for our discussion for that meeting. So, um, we believe that an engaged community that's, you know, cooperative and working towards, you know, established goals, uh, can benefit, you know, the Health Department's working at that and succeeding in that quite well.
Thank you. Kristin, Kristin Coons-Babur, who's also a member, works with Northwest Human Services and at the last minute she was called into something at work. I want to share with you a slide that would've gone with her presentation because there's a message in it, it's that one there. We talked about reaching out and reaching in. This was a, a slide, oh, that's not, that's not her slide. This is, well, that's, yeah, go back to that one, that's okay, because that says the same thing. It's, it's about the, the, the connectors and the, and the, um, pathways that, that we have on our board to bring information into the work that we do and to spread information, as Sean said, to the work that they, that each of the members do. And I think it, this is, this, this sort of network web illustrates breaking down silos and building bridges and it's, um, in keeping with, I think, a, a philosophy of the county. So with that, I know we're, we're running a little bit late. I would ask that next time we do this, could I bring along a big model of a bacteria and a virus and put them up here? I thought that was pretty neat, the, the cows, they, they made me smile. Anyway, so if you have questions, we'll, we'll entertain those. Carrie, any, any further comments? Okay. Questions?
Commissioner, you, you sit on the advisory board?
I do.
Any comments or?
Nope, I'm just, I'm learning. Okay.
Just thankful for what they're doing, that's all I can say.
Yeah, I, I got to serve on the, as the representative for about a year, uh, on the advisory board and got to observe the great work and I think it's even gotten better since you got rid of me.
No, it's, it's, it's gotten better as the new model, the new structure in the department and some new members on the board have come on. It's, and, and the work is, is actually fun. It's actually a, a good time. It's, it's serious, very serious. Unlike the fair where you're planning a big party, the work that we do is, is representing things to help prevent disease and to address social concerns and so on. So it's serious, but it's work we all take seriously because that's the work we're in. All of the members are in a, a role related to the delivery service.
And you've got a lot of very bright managers. I'm on the strategic plan steering committee. You've got some wonderful people guiding the department with, you know, following the different aspects of the strategic plan. And, um, we bring that to the board and try to give them information about what the workings of the department is doing so that we're up to speed on what's going on in the department and, um, probably maybe give them ideas on how to improve the quality of their work.
Great. Thanks Michael.
And we just got the Community Health Assessment, uh, presentation this last week too, so this is perfect timing how it all goes together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
And I see Deb back there, I know she serves on the advisory board. Is there anybody else in here today that serves on? Yeah, yeah. Got a couple of people back here, so, great. Thank you for your service, appreciate it, presentation today.
And thank you for your time.
Whose turn is it for this?
Well, it's the longest in history and it isn't mine.
Well, we're gonna do our consent account, consent calendar.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the consent calendar under Board of Commissioners, approve amendment number three to the Contract for Services with the Mid-Wilamette Community Action Agency Incorporated, in the amount of two hundred and ninety-three thousand four hundred and nine dollars, to provide services for veterans in Marion County through June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Under Health and Human Services, approve amendment number one to the Contract for Services with Dr. James F. Miller, that a hundred and seven thousand dollars for mental health assessments and care to individuals enrolled in the Marion County Health and Human Services Adult Behavioral Health Program with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Approve an order, uh, approving the following individuals as directors designated to Marion County Community Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities Program and allowing them to authorize emergency actions. Anne Marie Banfield, Mario De Obaldia, Erin Lacy, Melinda McCann, Deborah Nelson, Tony Sanzano, Alexander Tipton, Daisy Barrios, oh man, Joanna? Joanna Herrera, Allison Lay, Mark McIntyre, Alan Rainwater, Samantha Stevens, Deborah Wells, Vicky Byrne, Naomi Hudkins, Anna Masiera, Louise McMehan, Kevin Rents, Lisa Stewart, Andrew Davis, Alicia Kaufman, Catherine Martell Straight, Heidi Miller McSmith, Joseph Roche, and, uh, Galen Thiel. Under Public Works, received notice of the hearings officer decision approving conditional use case nineteen dash zero zero five Joyce. Approve the statutory warranty deed conveying the real property located Auburn Park to the Salem Kaiser School District for three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Under the Sheriff's Office, approve the Contract for Services with Bridgeway Recovery Services in the amount of two hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars to provide services for the Family Sentencing Alternative Program through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Approve the Contract for Services with Bridgeway Recovery Services in the amount of three hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars to provide services for medium-high-risk substance-abusing males who've been diagnosed with a mental health disorder through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Approve the Contract for Services with Bridgeway Recovery Services in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred dollars to provide services for medium-risk individuals through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Approve the Contract for Services with Bridgeway Recovery Services in the amount of two hundred and ninety-seven thousand six hundred and ten dollars to provide services for nonviolent property and drug offenders through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Approve the Contract for Services with Mid-Wilamette Community Action Agency Incorporated in the amount of a hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred and one dollars to provide re-entry and prison diversion services through the Demunis Center through June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Approve the Contract for Services with Shemecata Community College in the amount of three hundred and eighty-three thousand two hundred and eighty dollars to provide student opportunity for achieving results, soar services to offenders through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Approve the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon State Marine Board for Incoming Funds in the amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars to provide law enforcement services related to boating through June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Approve the Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Jefferson for Incoming Funds in the amount of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand six hundred and eighty dollars for law enforcement services through June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Approve amendment number eight to the Food Service Management Agreement with Summit Food Service LLC to add a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for inmate food services at the Marion County Jail with a term ending August thirty-first, twenty nineteen. And approve amendment number six to the Contract for Services with KEIF Commissary to provide inmate commissary and trust fund services at the Marion County Jail through July thirty-first, twenty nineteen.
So I missed some of that, would you start over? I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the longest in history consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All right. First action item under Board of Commissioners, consider an order approving appointment of Commander Joseph Cass to the Office of Marion County Sheriff effective July first, two thousand nineteen. John?
Yes?
It's your name by this.
So it's Jan's, but Jan's not here.
Yeah, you still gotta do some work.
You still gotta do some work.
Yeah, you're not done till the end of this week, pal. Like, quit passing the buck over there.
Oh boy.
You'd like me to take over like I've had to do in the past? Why not?
No.
You like to, never mind.
Yeah.
As we've all known today, uh, Sheriff, uh, Jason Myers has, is retiring, same day I am. And, uh, so the board has, uh, has taken it on itself to appoint a new sheriff who will take over on July first to replace, uh, Jason. And, uh, but the board still needs to adopt a, an order, uh, making that, uh, appointment take effect. So, uh, Joe is here. I don't know whether Joe wants to say anything or not, but he's welcome.
Welcome Joe.
You still want to do the job, huh?
Yeah, after what you saw today.
Thank you Commissioners, yes, um, my name is Joe Cass for the record. I'm honored and privileged to be in this position and I'm excited and looking forward to the opportunity. Sheriff Myers has done a great job for us for a number of years. I worked with him as a deputy as well for a number of years and I just, I really do look forward to continuing to build on the things we've been doing at the Sheriff's Office for the last, for my twenty-four years, but his almost thirty years. So I'm looking forward to it, I'm excited and, uh, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Great.
All right, Chair Cameron, if I could, I'd like to make a motion to approve the order that appoints Commander Joseph Cass to the Office of Marion County Sheriff effective July first, two thousand nineteen.
And I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Uh, just a comment that we did go through a selective process, uh, was a competitive process. Uh, Joe was, uh, unanimous in that choice by the board, uh, was that two weeks ago, I believe? We did that, I think? And so this is the formal appointment and you will hold that position until the election of, well, the next general election and, um, committed to run, uh, at that point in time, so.
They usually go thirty years here in Marion County.
The people will decide. We serve the people, right Joe?
That is correct.
You're right? We do.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Do we have a swearing-in ceremony for him scheduled when? Is that all done?
I thought it was Monday.
Is it Mon, is Monday the first?
Hopefully it's soon, because we're gonna lose a sheriff here.
Yeah, it's okay. There's no management update. It's Monday.
Okay, so we've got that scheduled for you?
Monday, July 1st.
All right, good. It's a great day. Okay, our next act, action item, thanks, Joe. Next action item, under Health and Human Services, consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Woodburn on behalf of the Woodburn Police Department in the amount of $300,000 to provide after-hours support and follow-up for the Mobile Crisis Response Team, or CORT, through June 30th, 2021. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Carolyn and Ann Marie? Yeah.
So I am Carolyn Frye. I'm the Division Director for Adult Behavioral Health Services with Health and Human Services. And we are very happy to be here today to talk a little bit about the agreement that we have with the City of Woodburn to continue providing mobile crisis services to that community. We know that you've heard a little bit about our mobile crisis services, but I have my expert with me, Ann Marie, who can answer any questions for you. What we are asking for is to consider the approval of an intergovernmental agreement, the City of Woodburn, on behalf of the Woodburn Police Department, in the amount of $300,000, to provide after-hours support and follow-up for the Crisis Outreach Response Team, which is also known as CORT, through June 30th, 2021.
So just a real quick question. We already have this team going in Woodburn. They're our third team, correct?
That's correct.
We have one with Marion County Deputy, one with Salem PD, and then one with Woodburn.
Yes, and we have a fourth team that we are in the process of getting together and starting in, in the Salem area, so.
Okay, so they would be with Salem PD as well, okay?
Yes.
Which is probably where the, most of the calls come. I just always, you know, I know that we've heard a lot about all the good things that this, this particular program has done, and I always tell the story, one day when I was doing a ride-along with one of our deputies, and I don't know if you've heard me tell this story, but we got a call, we were on Sinner and Lancaster. We got a call on a domestic violence, possible suicide going on in Aurora. I got to drive 100 miles an hour up I-5. Of course, last night I was stuck in traffic coming down because of paving. We never got there. 100 miles an hour going up the freeway to Aurora. The deputy who's been trained in, you know, recognition and, was able to stabilize the situation, and within a half hour up drove a Salem police car to the city of Aurora with a mental health professional. Got to see that all go. Nobody went to jail that day. People got connected up with services. So it's a great program, and really is something that we, we continue to need to expand. And I think the state's looking at what we do here as, as a model, so.
Yeah, we, that, that's one of the goals of the team is to help prevent people moving into jail and getting into services that are more appropriate for what's going on in their life. That's much more cost-effective around, you know, just across the board. Much, much less trauma to families and to individuals. So it's a very valuable team to provides a very valuable service.
Great.
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you for your work, Ann Marie and Carolyn. You get to see people often on very bad days in their lives, and you provide much-needed services to them. So thank you for that. And I would move Mr. Chair to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Woodburn on behalf of the Woodburn Police Department in the amount of $300,000 to provide after-hours support and follow-up for the Mobile Crisis Response Team through June 30th, 2021.
And I'll second it.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'm, I'm sorry, I just have, I have one question. I was looking at this contract, and this says after-hours support, and this talks about four days, 10-hour shifts.
Yeah, so I think we had a little miscommunication in, in the contract. The contract for the service, Mobile Crisis, is actually, we provide Mobile Crisis in the county seven days a week. And this team is four days, four days a week, 10 hours a day. And with the addition of our fourth team, we will actually cover throughout the county, and all of these teams go throughout the county. And so they will actually, with the four teams, we will cover Mobile Crisis from 8:00 in the morning until 2:00 in the morning, seven days a week. So we're, this is, this team has a four-day, 10, 10-hour schedule, but Mobile Crisis Services are seven days a week.
Great. Thank you.
Good clarification, Commissioner. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay, good. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Appreciate it. Contract Review Board, okay, so are we gonna go, am I gonna open, are we going under Contract Review Board here? Okay, we're gonna, the board will now be under Contract Review, and this is under Finance. Consider an order approving a sole-source procurement for the renewal of Tyler Technologies Inc. software applications and licenses. And Camber is here with Scott, so, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners and members of the board. My name is Camber Schlag. I am the Contracts and Procurement Manager in Finance.
And I am Scott Emery, Information Technology Director, and I do want to, of course, make sure that I recognize and say good morning to Dr. Latimer, since he has his official PhD.
He just left. He's going to school.
So we are here before you this morning because the Information Technology Department and the Assessor's Office is requesting an exemption to allow the use of a sole-source procurement for the renewal of a software license and maintenance support fees for the county's assessment and taxation software. A notice was posted on ORPEN on June 14th for seven days. We received no comments and no protest against this solicitation. The annual renewal of the software license and its upgrades, maintenance patches, and techno- technical support is necessary for the continuation of this software application. This renewal will not, this renewal will allow for efficient utilization of existing services as described in the Marion County Public Contracting Rules in Section 20-0275. The continued purchase of this license is unlikely to diminish competition for public agencies, or public contracts, excuse me, because we've had this software since 2013?
Actually, it was 20, 2007 is when I think it came through.
Currently, the Assessor's Office and the Information Technology Department are working with a vendor for a replacement system through a cooperative contract. So they're working, they're contact, we've made contact with the vendor. We're investigating the options right now. And so the Information Technology Department and the Assessor's Office is requesting that the county consider approval of the sole-source procurement for the renewal of Tyler Technologies for the fiscal year of 1920 in the amount of $185,712.14.
Okay. Any questions? If not, we'll take a motion.
I'm not sure. Do we have two separate, with my computer just isn't doing what I want it to. There should be two separate items?
So, right now, we're, yes, so right now we're asking for approval of this special procurement, and then once that is approved, then we're asking for approval of the contract.
All right, so I would make an order to approve the sole-source procurement for renewal of Tyler Technologies Incorporated software application and licenses.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Next one is to consider approval of an annual license and service agreement with Tyler Technologies Inc. for assessment and taxation software used by the Assessor's Office for $185,712.14.
Yeah, just a quick correction. It was actually 1997 when we actually procured this platform to begin with. The Marion County Assessor and Tax Office uses proprietary Tyler TSG system to process assessments and taxation. This system retains the data, retaining, relating to ownership, lot size, sales activities, inventory on all improvements to land, special assessment information, and other related data. The Assessor's Office uses this system to calculate all tax rates, urban renewals, joint values with other counties, and other functions to roll turn that occurs last, the last two weeks in September until the tax roll is certified. So this is very important for us on an annual basis, especially around our, our general funds. We're seeking approval to execute the, the one-time sole-source agreement for software maintenance and support from Tyler Technologies in the amount of $185,712.14. I think, contracts have already noted that we're actually pursuing other potential replacements for this platform, given the date and age of the, of the system. And with that, we're pleased to assist you with any of the questions you may have about this request.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yes, John?
Uh, I'm, it's too bad we have to use these people one more time. Tyler Technologies is my least favorite developer in the world. They don't do very-
You can't leave us with a lawsuit as you're heading out.
Yeah, I don't care.
Don't understate it, John. Tell us how you really feel.
Well, they, you know, they just don't take care of their customers. That's the end of the story. Thank you very much. Goodbye, Tyler.
So I'm under the, the impression then, Scott, we are moving off of this technology to another platform as soon as possible?
Correct. It's been more than 20 years, if you heard on the date of this particular platform, so it's extremely out of date. We're not sure, as we're assessing, whether it's going to be something along the lines of 14 months to maybe 24 months for replacement. So there is a potential we may have to come back one more time just to be able to complete the transition.
Okay, good. So I'll take a motion, Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the annual license and services agreement with Tyler Technologies Incorporated for assessment and taxation software used by the Assessor's Office for $185,712.14 through June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay, I will close Contact, Contract Review Board, and I will open a public hearing for Health and, Health and Human Services, a public hearing to consider an application to transfer the Franchise Ambulance Service Area ASA Number Five to the new ownership of Woodburn Ambulance Services. And I believe Carrie's here. Sean and Joe? I don't know if, I don't know, okay. And we have three people signed up in support of this. So I've got-
Two are up there, Dan Mullen.
Yeah, so Carrie, do you wanna, you wanna open us up with the issue, and then I will call these people up to testify in support?
Yes, good morning. First, by way of introductions, my name is Carrie Muller. I'm the Health and Human Services and Ambulance Services Area Administrator, and with me this morning I have-
Sean Baird with Woodburn Ambulance Service.
And Aaron Miller with Metro West Ambulance.
So before you this morning, you have the consideration for the request to transfer Woodburn Ambulance Services to Metro West Services. In this matter, Woodburn Services would continue to operate as Woodburn Services if the transfer goes through. A bit of context, if I could. In Marion County, emergency and non-emergency ambulance services are regulated by county code and state law. Today, there are 10 franchise ambulance service areas or geographic areas in which are assigned to one of the ambulance providers. An emergency medical response in Marion County can involve citizens, dispatchers, law enforcement, firefighters, first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, working in conjunction, in conjunction, excuse me, with hospital emergency departments. The ambulance service collaborative and coordinated efforts are directed by the Marion County Area Services Plan. Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee meets regularly to consider matters relevant to the ASA and reviews the ASA plan to make recommendations to the Administrator and the Board of Commissioners. Residents and visitors of Marion County benefit from established ambulance service systems and partner public safety professionals. As the ambulance service administrator, the role designated to the Health and Human Service Administrator by you, the Board of Commissioners, this matter becomes before you today. On June 12th, the Board of Commissioners received the application for transfer of ASA Number Five, Woodburn Ambulance Services, and my findings regarding the application, of which I found no issues of concern, and have recommended approval of transfer.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. First up, is signed up for our public hearing in support is Sean Baird. Sean, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to sit before you and just give you a little bit of perspective on this transfer application. I have been with Woodburn Ambulance since 1990, so close to 30 years, providing emergency medical services to citizens in North Marion County, and as a co-owner since about 1994, I believe. My two business partners who were involved from the beginning in 1978 and were ready to retire precipitated some discussion about how we would most successfully transition the business, allow them to get, get to where they need to be, and also assure that outstanding quality of care is provided for the citizens that we've always been serving since our inception in 1978. And it's not an easy thing to do. I mean, I, I have, throughout my career, from the beginning of my training, I understand the special relationship it is when you're a paramedic or EMT, and someone dials 911, you're coming into their home in their moment of crisis, whether it's a medical emergency, or a behavioral crisis, or on the roadside at a traumatic incident. You, you are the people who, the public, via, via the contracting process, as well as heart-to-heart, we're all community members and have, have deep relationships to the area we serve. And so for us, first and foremost, it was about finding what we felt was gonna be the most successful partner, and in this case also, perhaps selfishly, perhaps not, give me the opportunity to continue my career for the next several years in Marion County and in Woodburn, which was very important to me, to be able to stay and manage the service after this ownership transition occurs. So that's kind of the, the background for the Woodburn Ambulance piece, and it's also, if I might, introduce Aaron Miller, Vice President of Business Development with Metro West Ambulance Service, who I've worked with for many, many, many years. Our companies have collaborated throughout my career on different issues to make sure that we're continually advancing the quality of care we are able to offer around the state, not just in our own respective communities, as well as just helping each other out when, when our particular companies were in need. If I, if I had need of any kind of assistance, I could always turn to them and know that a helping hand would be there, and that provides me a lot of security about where we're headed, knowing that that's the type of organization that we'll be working with.
Great, thank you, Sean. Aaron?
Thank you, Commissioners. Yeah, I'm, I'm Aaron Miller, and I've worked for Metro West Ambulance for 23 years, and I'm representing J.D. Featon, who is the purchaser of Woodburn Ambulance. He's not able to be here today. He's in Washington DC where many of our employees are being recognized for the good work they do, and he's there with them. So I apologize for his absence today. But, yeah, we're excited to formalize this purchase and work more closely with Sean. We'll be working with Sean and Tony, and that is pretty much our model when we have made other purchases, is the company stays intact. They keep their names, their identity. Sometimes previous owners stay on board, or management staff. It's not our intention to change anything, but just to enhance the good work they've already started. And we've already started doing that with some clinical upgrades. And so I think that this is, you know, a good thing for Woodburn and that ASA.
Great. So I had, I had Dan signed up, so you're, is, Dan, did you wanna?
You need to make him.
Well, with that tie-on, you have to come up and get on the camera.
[laughter]
So you can just go right over there and squeeze in with them. Thank you. And just for the record, introduce yourself.
Dan Mullen, River Road, St. Paul. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time this morning, and I had to come and say some words on behalf of Sean because John mentioned this a month ago when you guys reappointed me about what he's done for this county and for the ASAs, and it, it, it's a good relationship and one that I really appreciate as being a mutual aid partner, St. Paul Fire District and Woodburn Ambulance. And hearing Aaron talk about continuing and growing what they've done, it's very important to us as a, as a neighbor in maintaining relationships. You know, it's a 50/50 when Sean calls. Man, do I answer the phone or not?
[laughter]
I haven't decided. But if I'm back here in a month seeing a presentation, I'm gonna be mad. So, anyway, I, we're full support of Sean and his next move.
Well, and, and Dan, thank you. I was up in your community, well, you were there. Did you both get up there Friday night to the-
I missed it.
To the Marion Ag- To the Marion Ag Appreciation Dinner and great community. And Sean, thank you so much for your service to the whole state and what you've done and I guess now the, the country, right? You've got some leadership position in...
I am the President-elect of the American Ambulance Association, so very soon I'll be occupied pretty fully with that.
We're honored to have you serve us that way and to have somebody like yourself, your statute, statute of going national, it's great, so.
If I could just add, Sean left Washington DC last night to get here for this presentation this morning. I think it really underscores his, both his commitment to his employees and the work that they do and his commitment to our community, so thank you for that, Sean.
Well, if you're like me in Washington DC, you can't wait to get out of that place anyway, so.
It wasn't a hard decision.
Exactly. Yeah, city surrounded by reality, right? As Reagan said, and so, good. So I think we...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, John.
I've known Sean for the 16 years I've been here and he does a superb job and I think not just with Woodburn Ambulance, but in helping with the whole, the ASA Committee and, and the work that they do. It's not always easy to hold that group together, but Sean's done a great job. Thanks.
Great. So I, I believe we're just gonna close this public hearing, action's gonna take, take place later if we need to, right? Is that right? I'm just looking at legal counsel. There's no action today.
No, I don't see an action actually on the agenda.
No, I couldn't see it either. When I was looking at the agenda, I probably should have clarified that. There's a, if there's a board order at some point...
I do have, I do have an order with me, if you'd like to consider it.
Yes. Well, if we can, if we can close the public hearing and then adopt it, is that order ready to go?
Yes.
All right. Do we need a motion?
Chair, Camera, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing and approve an order to transfer the franchise for Woodburn Ambulance Service to the new ownership of Woodburn Ambulance Services Incorporated.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a, a motion to close the public hearing and accept the board order. Any further discussion?
I do.
Yeah?
Well, just to, I'm so happy Sean remains and you've heard testimony to, well, received and how much he does here. So he remains the face still active in both the ambulance service and the, and the county too. I'm real pleased about that. And Renee, I just didn't hear you say, and I admit, I'm sometimes distracted, tell us a little, is it Metro West is the main company? I've got it wrong. It is, my computer's down, but could you tell us about the company, the communities you service, et cetera?
Oh, sure. Metro West is a second-generation family-owned business. It started in 1953. J.D. Featon is the son of the original founder and, sorry.
Thank you, yes.
We serve communities all through Oregon. We start, well, we have the 911 contract in Washington County. We also start, have a service in Astoria, all the way down to Cannon Beach, and then we pick up again in Lincoln City to Newport, Coos Bay, Roseburg, Eugene. We just started, or purchased a company in California, Northern California, in Crescent City. And then we also, in Washington, are up in Pacific County, kind of on the tip there.
Sure.
And then, and that's our, pretty much our emergency business and then we have non-emergency businesses all over the state, literally. We have a, a facility in Clackamas County in Portland. We have major contracts for inter-facility transports, Kaiser, the Veterans Administration. So we're, we're pretty much all over the Northwest.
I had no idea. Well, welcome to Marion County, assuming you get a little vote and that's all my questions.
So we have a mo, do we have a motion and a second, right? Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for wading through our whole long, this is one of our longer board sessions.
I get to see about the fair, they may want to come back.
Yeah, you come back, well, I know, Dan will be here for the fair. He's gonna buy one of those pigs that has a Brantano name on the back of it. Yeah. 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 All right. You want to read the calendar, Commissioner?
I sure do.
Well, you know, I guess we could do that afterwards. Yeah. Go ahead.
All right. Today is Wednesday, June 26th. It's 9:00 AM and we are at board session in the Senator Hearing Room. This evening at 5:30 PM, we have the Marion County Fair Board meeting at the Log Cabin on the Oregon State Fairgrounds. That's 233017th Street Northeast in Salem. Tomorrow, Thursday, June 27th, at 2:30 in the afternoon, we have a Behavioral Care Network Executive Committee meeting located at the BCN Large Conference Room at 555 Hawthorne Avenue Southeast, Suite 150. Tomorrow, Thursday, June 27th, at 4:00 in the afternoon, we have the retirement celebration for Sheriff Jason Myers located at the Die House, the Willamette Heritage Center, 1313 Mill Street Southeast in Salem. On July 7th, that's Monday, at 8:30 in the morning, we have Calendar Review located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. On Monday, July 1st, at 9:00 AM, we have a swearing-in ceremony for Sheriff Joe Cast located in this room, the Senator Hearing Room, on the first floor of this building, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. On Wednesday, July 3rd, we have board session located in the Senator Hearing Room. That's this room, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. And then at noon on Wednesday, July 3rd, we have a Woodburn Marion County meeting located at Louisa's Taqueria, 523 Front Street in Woodburn.
I think you and I are thinking about the same thing.
Yeah. This special, John's last meeting, so I'll just, I'll do the nice stuff first. I've really, no, I've enjoyed your availability, knowledge, your support and generally pleasant demeanor for all these 16 years. And you, I really appreciate it and you'll be missed, but that's all I'll say halfway serious. So, is that it? Good enough? He ran everybody out of here except us, so.
And Patrick, look at Patrick, Patrick. I was just gonna say, he's the last man standing out there.
Patrick's about as longstanding as John Latimer.
Yeah, and longer.
Yeah.
Well, this is, yeah, this is the work of the county, isn't it? And, yeah, thanks for keeping us on track, John. There's a lot of work that goes, goes on to make sure that kind of we're where we're supposed to be, doing what we're supposed to be doing and we couldn't do it without you, so, thank you.
Mr. Chair and members, it's, I get to sit up here as a figurehead, but there's a lot of people that work for us that do all the real work and it's been a pleasure working with all of them and you. And next week, there'll be another face here in this spot, it'll be Jan Fritz, who will be, do even better than I could ever do, so, thank you for all your support.
So I'll never forget the first time I met John Latimer. Well, I probably had met him before, but the first time that he really met me. And I was the House Republican Leader and he had an appointment and he came into my office and he said, "You can't do this!"
No, no, I was nicer than that.
Uh, well, it was kind of like that. I was, I was, I had filed a bill to make whatever that transportation company is called up in Portland.
Metro.
Metro amortized their healthcare benefit that they promised everybody when it retires and it was $800 million liability. Then it wasn't on their books and it, now probably it's a billion and a half dollars today, who knows? And John came into my office and said, "This is gonna cost Marion County blah, blah, blah." So he, he educated me that day. Of course, I filed the bill again, changed it and kept Marion County out of it. And it's really interesting because I think it was like less than a month ago, he came into my office and he goes, "You can't do this!" And I stood up and said, "Yes, I can!" Oh, John.
That bill was, it was interesting because there's a law that requires that local governments keep their retired employees as well as their current employees in the same rate pool for healthcare. And, and what that bill would have done would have required us to set aside all the money necessary to fund those costs for the healthcare, even though in our case, the employees are on the sys, the retirees are on the system, have to pay their own healthcare. It was, it's a screwy system.
Oh, well, you don't have to worry about it. It's not gonna happen now because nobody over there cares about liability and money.
Well, if you remember, I tried to get a bill passed that would have separated the two rate pools and...
That didn't fly either.
Well, it, everybody thought it was a great idea until certain well-placed lobbying groups came up and bashed it and went...
Well, I just know that you have done great work for Marion County in your leadership and especially in the fiscal side and I've appreciated your mentorship and things that you've redirected me in and I will miss you, but I know that you're only a phone call away to have some lunch or something and talk about it, so we just all wish you well next week when you wake up on Monday morning. I hope you've got something to do. Oh. It'd be awful hard, it's gonna be awful hard not to come into the office for you, I'm sure.
I have a wife and a daughter who have everything lined up for me. Believe me.
And you got the fair coming up, your grandson, you can take him to the fair. You can buy one of those, you don't eat red meat. Buy the pig, it's the other white meat.
Yeah, that's, that's a fiction too.
Yeah. Well, good. Anything else?
No.
Special day.
We say goodbye to John. We will adjourn.
There you go.